Ladies and gentlemen, we are rolling and streaming live. Okay, is everybody ready to go on this then? Okay. Hello and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting for Tuesday, June 16th, 2020. It's being held by teleconference. There, if you wish to participate in public comment, there are, you can telephone in at 408-638-0968, or 669-900-6833, And the webinar ID is 827-2274-7698. And the password is 135692. And you can press 9 to raise your hand for public comment. We will, so we have a quorum. We have three members that are on the screen that I can see. So I will call the meeting to order. Do we have any planning commissioner announcements? Okay, Michael, Susan, I see none. So Jesse and Joseph are unavailable tonight or unable to join us through technology here. So we have, the first item is the consent calendar. And we had two items on the consent calendar, A1 and A2. We have the current events, planning, processing list, and the approval of the minutes for the meeting of April 7th, 2020. Do, would anybody like to, pull any of those, pull either of the items?
I would move we approve.
A second.
Okay, we've got a, we've got a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Can Scott, you want to call all the order, the roll on this just?
Sure, Commissioner Lucas. Mr. Stewart?
Aye.
Chair Lord?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0.
So let me check back again and see if we had anybody of the public wishing to speak as in public comment.
We don't have anybody in the queue.
In the queue, okay. So then seeing none, we've got, we'll go to item number B. And this is public hearings and we have none. And then so moving on to new business, item number C. We have C1, which is the annual water report and recommendation for allocation of water equivalency units for fiscal year 2020 and 21. Do we have a staff report on this, Scott?
Yeah, we have Damaris Hansen, our environmental programs manager with Public Works Department. She'll be providing the presentation and the backup role we have Rob Leibig as staff as well. So with that, I think if Damaris wants to hop on and she has a presentation to share.
All right, thank you, but let me share my screen. Everyone see it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Good evening, planning commissioners. Tonight we will be going over the annual water report and the allocation of the fiscal year 2021 water equivalency units. So water equivalency units, or WEUs, are a measurement of water used to, that are equal to the average amount of water used in a single family residence over the period of a year. The intent of the WEU allocations are to regulate the new addition of new water users to the city's water system and ensure the demand of the water does not increase the available water supply. So how did we get here using WEUs to regulate the building? In 1984, a citizen adopted Measure F, which was codified into ordinance 266, more by municipal code 13.20. Measure F is a growth management system. It set a maximum population of 12,200 and a maximum number of WEUs issued each year at 70. The council in 2007 changed that 70 to a 50. So that's 50 residential units. Measure F allows 130% of those residential WEUs shall be used for commercial and industrial. So you have 50 WEUs and 65 commercial industrial WEUs. From 1977 to 2015, a WEU is equal to 10,780 cubic feet of water per year. And this is based on 166 gallons per capita per day. The amount of the WEU was updated in 2016 to equal 8,732 cubic feet of water, or 90 gallons per capita per day. This 90 gallons per capita per day represents our current water usage compared to previous years. If you look on table two at the, towards the end of it, in the last few years, the average gallons per capita per day is around 90. So our current water supply where we're at now, we have state water. That's about 90% of our water. The Department of Water Resources informed the state water contractors allocation for 2021 will be 20%. But this 20%, along with our drought buffer and storage and sandless reservoir is enough to make up the difference and provide enough water for the city's projected average demand. Average demand is approximately 950 to 50 to 1,300 acre feet a year. We also have our Morro Valley wells and the Morro Valley water rights permit. That makes up about 10% of our water supply. This water is high in nitrates and requires treatment with the Brackish Water Reverse Osmosis Plant to remove those nitrates. The Morro Valley Water Rights allows us to allocate 581 acre feet a year. Mostly the Morro water is used for when state water is shut down. State water is an interruptible service if they have a line break. Or they have maintenance every year, they typically shut down for roughly around two weeks. So this water in Morro Valley is used then, and we also use it as makeup water. If we have a busy weekend, we can make a little water to help fill those tanks. We also have Choro Valley. That has not made up any of our water system supply for a little while now. These wells also require a stream flow to exceed 1.4 cubic feet per second in order to pump. And this pumped water is also high in nitrates and needs to be treated prior to distribution. Currently, the city does not have a pipeline to take this water to the Brackish Water Reverse Osmosis Plant for treatment. We also have water conservation. While it's not a supply, it does help our demand. So Morro Bay has continued to reduce the amount of water usage in the last six years compared to the base year of 2013. In 2019, our usage was down 19% compared to 2013. So these two graphs show historic water usage. The one on the left is the water usage over the last 20 years. And you can see that over the last 20 years, the trend line shows that water use has gone down compared to the other graph of population that has slightly gone up over the last 20 years. So we're using less water with more people. So after looking over the historic water use and seeing the trends decrease in our current water supply, and we know that we have enough water through state water, we can look at our future water, our water management planning. So in November 2018, City Council adopted the One Water Plan. The One Water Plan is one of the city council's major goals. One Water Plan reviewed the city's water resources, potable water, wastewater, and storm water holistically to have a complete water resource picture. One Water determined, due to the restrictions of the Choro Valley, this was not a reliable water source for the city. Additionally, due to the cost of the seawater desalinization, it was recommended to discontinue the use of the Choro Valley, or the desal water supply. The water reclamation facility was determined to be more reliable, sustainable, and cost-effective water source than the other options analyzed by the One Water Plan. The new water reclamation facility will provide the city with the ability to provide up to 800 acre feet per year. And the water will be through indirect potable reuse. So injecting this highly purified water into Morro Valley groundwater basin and recovering that water through our existing extraction wells. So this brings us to the summary of the fiscal year 2019, 20 water equivalency allocations. So for the past 10 years or so, City Council has allocated 115 WEUs. Last fiscal year, City Council allocated 115 WEUs. Were allotted and 8.09 have been used. So that's .59 for the commercial, six single families, and 1.5 multifamily. So in conclusion, the governor lifted the state drought, mandated that the city still make conservation a way of life. Morro Bay has continued to conserve water and many citizens have made conservation a way of life. The city will receive our allotment from state water and meet our projected water demands. And we're meeting Measure F compliance. Therefore, staff recommends planning commission forward a recommendation to City Council to allocate 115 WEUs for 2021. That's 50 residential, 30 for a single family, 20 for multifamily, and 65 for commercial industrial. And that concludes my presentation and I can answer some questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any, any questions for staff?
Yeah.
Michael?
Thanks, thanks, Damaris and Rob. These are interesting times for, for people with interest in water. I'm, I'm very confused. This is one of the most confusing things that we do when we look at this. None of the numbers really seem to, to line up with common sense. So the, the typical weighted unit actually is for half of a house. Is that what I was reading in here?
The, what a WEU is? One WEU is one single family home?
It is.
Yeah, so the multifamily is half a unit. So there's a three-unit apartment building, so those are half a unit each.
And tell me again when the fiscal, fiscal year is that we're talking about?
July 1st to June 30th.
Okay, I guess my, my biggest concern is when I look at that list of projects that we just looked at, it strikes me, we've got a lot more housing being built than, it seems like, the six single family homes just can't seem right. And the one and a half multifamily. So is it when they come in for permit that they get enacted into this? Or is it when they're completed construction?
It's when they are issued. So, and the, the numbers seem low. Last time this was brought to you, the numbers were quite a bit higher. It had Morro Mist in there and it had some of, blanking on the name, but Wayne Comer's project there.
The Black Hills Villas?
The Black Hills Villa, correct. So it had more of them then. And this, the single family homes, WEUs, is for a single family home that's built on an empty lot. It's not if there's already a house there and then they're tearing it down, rebuilding another one. Because that water use has already been accounted for.
And then this is, what do we do with the accessory dwelling units that are coming on?
The accessory dwelling units are a little bit of a different animal. And Scott or Rob, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but they're not counted. The state has some kind of mandate that doesn't, that, we don't count them as part of one of these single family homes or multifamily home.
Yeah, I wanted to applaud Mr. Peck that we had some correspondence on that. I'm not sure it's in the public record yet, it came later today, late today. But it was very articulate thing about undercounting. And, and I just wanted to pause and say, I'm not sure we're undercounting because of things like that. When we have accessory dwelling units that all of a sudden mysteriously draw water, but we aren't counting them against this. It strikes me that, that we've got to actually couch this such that we're not limiting development of projects that we've already approved. You know, we just approved the, the go-ahead at some point in this next fiscal year, I think, is when the, 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 the project on 41 and, and North Main would be coming through. And, and so that's by itself, that even at half, that's 17 and a half of our, you know, multifamily units. And then we, we approved the motel. And I'm not sure where it exactly is. But I guess, I guess my, my only fear is the, the, the correspondence between an intuitive system of a single family home as a single family home relative to these units. And it really isn't that way. And we just have to be as planners conscious of the fact that we've, we've got that work unit that, that we just approved a few minutes ago that has many projects on there. And some of those will actually be occupied units that will increase our residential capacity, but aren't being counted as weighted units. And some of them are, you know, things that are adding on square footage and making it capable of homes to have more people living in them. And those aren't being counted in the weighted units because they're modifications to existing homes. And I just want to make sure, it seems to me like between what seems to be an over capacity by some of the numbers, I, I feel reasonably comfortable that this number shouldn't be reduced by any means as, it might be one of the implications. I think it's actually acting as our logic buffer for what's actually happening, which includes the, you know, accessory dwellings, the, the house expansions, as well as the, you know, multifamily that's based on, you know. Tell me again, is it when the permit is issued or when occupancy permit is issued?
When the permit is issued.
Okay, so some of those things may be things that are coming up. I, I also think, you know, a lot of the folks that are drawn to this area have the capacity to take care of the low interest rates despite our economy. And I wouldn't be surprised if we don't see kind of a spike in, in some building here in this next fiscal year. But, but I thank you for all your work. It's really complicated. Those are the things I have right now. One more that I've got here in my notes. When we get the 800, hopefully, acre feet coming through the recycling of the water into the Morro Creek, what, what are we allowed to do with that 800 surplus units for the state that we get from the state water system? Are we able to lease those or resell them somewhere down the line?
From the state water?
Yes.
I will probably defer to Rob to answer that question if he could.
Yeah, this is, Rob here. The state water is another highly regulated commodity. And it's not readily marketable the way our existing contract works. We have the ability to turn that water back, sell that water back to the state through the turnback pool, which is, we pay roughly in round numbers about $2,000 acre foot. And we could get about $12 an acre foot through the turnback pool. So not a viable, economically viable method of, of trading water. With the renegotiation of the state water contract, DWR, Department of Water Resources, the state of California, is working on some new water management tools that'll free up the way that water can get negotiated. So we, the city, in conjunction with the San Luis Obispo County Conservation, Water Conservation and Flood Control District, who is the contractor for state water. We are a subcontractor. With their permission, we will have more ability to sell that water on kind of the open, open market for its actual water value.
That's great because, you know, I see, we don't hear so much about the Central Valley, but they're having so much problems with irrigation capacity in there. And looking at the state putting huge amounts of money into reservoirs and dams and new projects that this would seem to be, everybody should be supportive at the state system of us having this capacity to not get $12, $12 on 2,000. But that, that's, that's, that's bad yard sale dealing there. They, they should, they should be able to recognize that, that we've got something of, of value here. So I just appreciate what you're doing. It's very confusing, but it seems to me we're safe with this from what I've heard, you know, Damaris told me and, and what I see in the numbers. I'm, I, I don't think we need to reduce it at all.
Just a little bit more on the gallons per capita per day. That's a composite number, so it's not a specific single family home. It's the overall city water use converted to a, a single family usage. So it blends in, you know, commercial usage. That's how, you know, kind of we have some factor of safety with this.
Let me just ask one more thing and I'll, I'll be quiet. When we have somebody who takes a single family home and puts it into commercial use with the, you know, Airbnb and things like that, do we count that? Which side do we count that on in the, how many res, do we take that away from the residential side and, and try to look at it as commercial or how, how does that work?
I believe that would still be a, a single family residential usage there. So it's not allocated to the commercial side.
Okay. I just, I just see my, my neighbor, neighboring home have four cars in the driveway and 14 people there. And I'm, I'm hoping they take a shower, but maybe they're not there seven days a week, so that evens out. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Susan, you had, you had, did you have any questions?
The only question I had, I guess, is do we ever hit capacity of these yearly allotments?
Not in the last 13 years that I've been here. And I don't believe, looking at the old tables, Damaris probably has a better feeling for the numbers. I haven't looked at the historical data in a while, but I can't recall us hitting capacity in a.
We haven't, as far as I know, and we haven't really even come close.
Yeah, and especially it seems like in commercial.
We came, we came close and there was actually some, some shifting, you know. But that was when there was a huge growth spurt in the whole, in the whole county. But I can't remember any projects being denied.
What about the large hotel project we approved? How, how will that count?
The WEUs for that will be, they'll figure that out. So there's a, there's a table in the municipal that helps us figure that out. I can't remember if it's by square footage for the hotels or what it's.
Or hotels, it's by square footage of occupied rooms, I believe. Depends if there's a restaurant turnout, there's, there's a, a few variables with commercial.
Just seems to me like we would be kind of happy to be getting close to build out on the water allotment. You know, we would be seeing some good growth in the community that we likely need. So I, I'm with Michael. I have no problem with this allotment. And wonder based on Steve Peck's letter, whether we could at some point even consider more. It's just, it doesn't look like there's a need for more at this point, so. But thank you for your report. It's great.
Okay, I've got a couple of questions on this.
Jerry, just, just a second. I wanted to let you know that both Jesse and Joe and Grafia are, Jesse Barone and John Grafia are on now.
Okay, I haven't seen them pop up on my screen, so. Do you guys, do you have any questions?
I don't.
Oh, well, the obvious question, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. We can hear you.
Okay, all right.
Okay, Joseph, did you have any questions you wanted to ask?
Yes, just, just one. And when the, the water reclamation plan is completed, will that result in, in a lower order of state waters?
So the state water is by contract through San Luis Obispo County Water Conservation and Flood Control District. So we contracted for 1,313 acre feet a year. We can always take less state water, but until the coastal branch is paid off, we'll be still paying those fixed costs for that debt service. So taking less state water increases the unit costs of state water. Once those costs are paid off and there's, the DWR adopts the water management tools, there will be the ability to negotiate that water in conjunction with the county flood control and water conservation district on the open market and perhaps take less water.
When do you, Rob, when do you see that transpiring?
I believe that there are three or four years left on that contract with, that finance the coastal branch debt. And then the overall contract is with the state of California is through 2038. And the state is looking to add 50 years to that contract through amendment. So they can, they can debt finance overall system improvements that need to be done. Like the California Water Fix Project, getting the water through the Delta. And then there's large maintenance projects on the, the overall project too. You know, it was a project that was, you know, envisioned many, many years and constructed many years ago.
Joseph, did you have any other questions on that?
For right now, no.
Okay. I've got a couple of, most of the questions that I had being asked, that have already been asked and answered. But what do we have as far as when we, when we're introducing the water into the, into the Morro Basin? How's that going to affect the nitrate levels?
Our modeling shows that it'll reduce nitrate levels to, with injection and withdrawal to a point where we will likely not have to treat that water through the Brackish Water RO to use it in, in the system. So we'll see a reduction in nitrate. Now, we haven't done the pilot testing to prove out the modeling. That'll happen, you know, later on this year. And we're working with the state of California Water Boards Division and Drinking Water on those pilot tests.
Okay. From your, from the, basically the top of your head, I guess, is it going to be better for us in the future to maintain the state water contract when we get our recycling plan up and running? Or how do you, how do you see that gaming out?
Well, in my professional opinion, I believe that we need multiple water sources. We can't be, you know, there, there is enough variability with, with water that it probably doesn't make sense to be 100% reliant on state water, nor 100% reliant on groundwater. But to have those multiple water resources available to us so that we, in an emergency, that we have some flexibility to supply the, the community with water. So we may be able to, one of the, the One Water Plan findings was to basically reduce our drought buffer or our insurance policy with state water and use the reclaimed water as that, that insurance policy for water availability. So we, we may not, not need to pay the additional amount that we pay for the kind of insurance policy that, you know, makes us whole during these low water years.
During the shutdown time that we've been experiencing, what has that done to our water usage this first part of this year? Do you have any data on that?
Damaris, I don't believe it has affected the water consumption. We just changed supplies.
Okay, so, so basically the commercial and the, the, you know, the hotels that have been shut down have been used. Okay, so so basically the commercial and the, you know, the hotels that have been shut down have been used by more residential units then?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was thinking state water shut down, not the COVID shutdowns.
Well, I'm thinking of people shut down.
Damaris?
Yeah, so the residential water use went up and the commercial industrial type water use went down quite a bit. I want to say like down 30 or 40%, I think it was. And the commercial and the red and the commercial went down 30 or 40% and the residential went up, maybe only 10%.
So where did we balance out on that, Damaris? Do we do we use more water or less water for the first?
We use less water.
Less water. Okay, and then I have a question for Scott on this. Typically, we get a mandate by the state to that we that we have to create so many dwelling units or there are a risk of losing state financing on some projects. Where are we with that? Because we're never able to because of the water constraints. We're never ever able to even come close, so.
No, we can we can meet our we can meet arena numbers. The number of housing units were required to provide at the different income levels. We just haven't had the construction demand over the last, you know, several years. So while we we came somewhat close to the overall numbers out of the last arena cycle, we just didn't meet the tiers, meaning for low, very low, extremely low income levels. We have a lot of, you know, moderate and above and then market rate units more so than the affordable. But this this the water allocation, you know, through the WEU process doesn't limit our ability. We we can meet arena numbers with the amount of water that we have. I mean, the city could, I mean, we could relook at how we do it. We don't like, we don't use the all the the WEUs that we allocate. We just had that discussion, right, from the previous years. But we don't like accumulate them and then like have a whole bunch and say, hey, we can, you know, add those on to the ones for this year and build that many units. But the city could do that. It's just not something that we found a need to do because of the demand hasn't been there.
Okay, yeah, if there isn't people to buy to to build them, there's no sense having the capacity.
That's kind of the why we've taken the approach that we have to this point.
Yeah, and could we do an emergency measure in case we if something drastically changes like that?
I assume we could. I mean, I don't know. I mean, we meaning like meaning could we go back and 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 have that conversation with the with the council?
Yes.
I assume so.
Council in the past has carried over prior years. WEUs, we just haven't in a very long time.
I guess my only concern, if I can follow up on Jerry's question, is, you know, this this proposal that we're acting on tonight says 20 for multifamily residences, that's 40 units, correct? We just passed 35 last week that potentially could come on board this next fiscal year. We don't have very many multifamily units left. So what you're saying is we can potentially redistribute the 30 for single family and and inflate the multifamily? Or we can borrow from the commercial to supplement the multifamily if needed?
We can, the MUNICO does allow us to go back to council and ask for more. And, you know, that almost happened like last year when we came through. We had close to the amount of multifamily as well because of Morro Mist. There was 24 units there, I think it was, and then some other ones. So we do have the ability to go back to council and ask for more. We are supposed to watch this as it goes it goes through the year. And if we're getting close, then go back to council and, you know, reevaluate.
So, so Scott, can, you know, when projects come forward to us, can we add on a tally on these projects to say where we are in our water allocations? Because I haven't seen that on these projects as they've come come to us.
Well, and and it wouldn't make a lot of sense either, because a lot of times they don't come forward until the following year, fiscal year, right? They'll go through an approval process through planning commission, but they don't come, you know, out through building and get issued a permit until the following year. So I don't know, we certainly could do it, I just don't know how relevant it would be.
Yeah, and then also we're dealing with plan development and permitting and stuff like that. So that can slide the project for one or two years into the future of at least two. It's just I wouldn't want to get in the case where, you know, where we're approving projects and don't have the water to allow them to be built.
And so that's something from a staff standpoint that we watch.
Okay. Does anybody else have questions?
Yeah, I was going to follow up on that last one. So Scott, what you're saying is this is a this is a general mix that produces a total use in 115 WEUs that if if we would have some move on the multifamily residences, you know, one of the things that I've seen and and I think the, you know, not in my backyard thing is is a is a powerful thing we have to listen to and and try to understand. But, you know, we wouldn't necessarily be held up because the community would say this project's going to take us over the 20 MFR of the 115 WEUs. We would be able to ask staff to ascertain whether or not that mix was still viable within the 115, the way things were playing out. Is that correct? You couldn't use this as a as a mechanism to stop a project?
No, I mean, the point behind this whole thing and why it came into being was we had, you know, we had with water availability issues in the city at the time, you know. I mean, since that's happened, we 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 brought the D-SAL plan online, we went on to state water. I mean, so, you know, the the water portfolio that we have today is a lot different than the water portfolio we had back when the when the measure was put in place. And so, I mean, the fact that we do this every year is sort of interesting. I mean, at some point, we probably need to go pick this up and rethink it because it doesn't it doesn't represent where we are today. And obviously, we've not reached the population. We were supposed to reach 12,200 based on the the referendum back in 2000. But we're not there, and we're not going to probably get there through the next, you know, general plan cycle, which is 20 years. So, you know, that we're doing it and we're doing it because it was, you know, initiative passed through the voter process. But it doesn't really, you know, reflect current circumstances in the city. You know, and the point behind it is to make sure we have enough water, you know, for citizens, right? What we do, and if we have a water, whatever, now we're looking to diversify that through water. So, you know, at some point, I think we just need to pick this up and sort of reevaluate what we're doing. Because you have all these questions and it's not possible, but you got the processes with the right place to run it, so.
I did have one more question, Jerry. The, I I guess the one thing that also says in here is, are we giving our blessing about removing the pumps from Choro with this? Or is that is that a larger public works concern beyond us?
That was an action that council took when they approved the One Water Plan back in November of 18. When they passed that resolution, gave direction to start getting out of the Choro Valley and to decommission the seawater D-SAL.
Yeah, I just I just like your comments about having multiple places. I know that one of our, you know, adjacent users, you know, the men's colony down there, if I'm not mistaken, they had a significant issue with sewage down there that maybe at some point they were potentially going to be looking at a different kind of system. And it it wouldn't surprise me if at some point they don't adopt the same thing Los Osos did and and we're doing with groundwater recharging. And I I wonder if at some point their affluent into the treated affluent into the Choro flats wouldn't make that a viable source backup source at some future point. I don't know where they are with any of that thinking. But I know that was something I remember from our discussions before about who could we partner with on facilities. And one of them was considering the men's colony. And I think that was dismissed pretty quickly early on in the discussions for our plant. But maybe that's a, you know, maybe at some point, maybe Choro would become more viable. But maintaining those facilities has a cost that I think is probably smart. The council decided to abandon that infrastructure.
Okay, I've got another question for you, Rob or Damaris, which whichever would be more appropriate. We have, there are some injection wells, I believe, you know, in the in the Morro Basin. And we also have some some agriculture further up that that at some points were were pulling a lot of water. And I think it was actually the an avocado farm up there. How how have you, do we have any regulatory or or code or municipal code that that we've applied to basically protect the the groundwater that we inject back into the basin that to to protect it so that it's it's we would be able to pull it out for our use again and not have somebody basically stick another straw in there or contaminate it?
Sure, the the Morro Basin has really two distinct areas vertically. There's the Upper Morro Basin, and then it goes through the Narrows to the Lower Morro Basin. The Lower Morro Basin is where we'd be injecting that water. The folks that are in the Upper Morro Basin, the agriculture, have no physical way to access that Lower Morro Basin water. So they're the only wells in the Lower Morro Basin are City of Morro Bay Wells and Morro Bay Mutual Water Company wells. Morro Bay Mutual Water Company is the water company that was formed by PG&E for the power plant. And they haven't run those wells since the power plant was in operation. It's boiler makeup water. So really, the city is the only user of the Lower Morro Basin.
And then the industrial that's there, such as the the laundry unit there and the Culligan, I believe, do they have a salt injection well? Or do they have a discharge well that they they put into the basin?
No, they discharge the sanitary sewer and it's treated, yeah.
Okay, I thought I remembered remembered that from past years or something. Okay, do we have any other questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any anybody pop up. Do we have a any more discussion or recommendation or motion?
Mr. Lur, we do have state public comment and we do have one person in the queue.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and let them in.
Ms. Winholz, you're on the line. Ms. Winholz, can you hear us? Hello, Betty? Well, her hand is raised and I've got her able to talk.
Can you hear me now, sir?
There we are, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much. Earlier in your questioning, you talked about, Mr. Leibig mentioned that there'll be a point at which the injection wells into the Morro Valley will be able to clean up the nitrates. How many years will that take would be a question that I have about that. And then in another point of your discussion, you talked about being able to change over credits from multifamily to single to commercial. And for example, at the school board tonight, they talked about perhaps converting the elementary school, the old one, into residential housing, maybe even 170 units. And so it seems to me that kind of goes to that question. Would we be able to handle 170 in one year or would you have to go back to council? And then kind of tangential to that, at what point is the city going to be told that the school board is considering putting all that residential into that downtown area? Because I've heard nothing of it from the city, but only from the school. And then I think I have one more question or point, and that is in the in the past, and I think it's mentioned in the staff report, that the council has adjusted the WEUs and they adjusted it down from 70 to 50 because we weren't using so many. So certainly there's precedent to, you know, mix and match what we would need for ourselves. And let me just express my concern, even though obviously it's a done deal that giving up water rights ever, even if it's in the Choro Valley, is probably a mistake and that we need to keep all the water rights wherever they are for the city into the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no more people in the queue.
I just want to make a quick comment. The the materials that are in tables, tables one and two and the staff report are really excellent. And what I think is comforting in a way is that we we have had a five-year period there where there seems to be kind of a stasis. It's it's fairly consistent across the last five years. So all the calls for, you know, wise water use and things like that were heated. And we seem to be on a on a nice plateau here where we 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 understand the numbers really well pretty consistently there. So I think if we have a growth capacity here with some of our larger sites and some of these multifamily things like Ms. Winholz was saying and like we just talked about last week, I think we're in a in a good position to 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 grow in that way with with our residential.
Let's hear the rest of the public comment.
Yes, sir, there are no more people in the queue.
Okay, great, I thought I heard there were four.
No, sorry. Is Ms. Harris done with her PowerPoint?
Oh, yes, give me that.
Okay, there we go. Okay, so whoever could ask, answer the question of the timing on the nitrates, how long it would take to flush the nitrates out? And then if we've heard anything from the school district on the 170 units that they're contemplating?
Rob, you want to take the nitrate thing first or?
Sure. That was presented in GSI's update that they did last year. And I'm trying to locate that information. I know that they did a 38-year simulation period with their model. But I'm not finding the data readily for how long it takes to reduce down to below action levels on those nitrates, so.
Well, you're looking for that, Rob. Have you heard anything about the the residential units the school district is?
We've been in ongoing conversations with the school district. You know, the property that's over there where the school is is identified as high-density residential. So looking at housing for is appropriate based on the location. They have had several different conversations with us about it, both looking at, you know, is do they want to do housing? Do they want to do a mixed-use project? Kind of been kicking around a lot of different options and then doing a feasibility study on what that looks like from a payback standpoint and then trying to determine, you know, which is why they're probably in front of the board, is, you know, like, do we want to have some for sale units, you know, because that's a one-time revenue source? And then do we want to have some rental units? That's a it's a long-term revenue source that you get to you get to keep getting money in, which is one of the things they want because they're looking at reduce funding as a result of the closure of Diablo. So they're looking at a lot of different options right now to see what makes the most sense from the school district standpoint and the backfill funds that they're they're losing out on with the closure of Diablo. That's my understanding of the situation as it stands today. I think once they get further down the road, they will, you know, do start doing so once they figure out where they want to go or makes the most sense, they'll probably start coming into. start coming into...
Okay. And then, um...
Jerry?
Yeah.
Could I say they did come through the community and there were several outreach groups that were done? Um, the, the, the school district hired, um, a, a group of consultants to come and talk with people in the community. So there were little focus groups, um, residents, business communities, some city people, I think. So, so there was an amount of outreach that was done to see what people felt would be needed and appropriate for the use of that site. So, you know, it's been at a community level, I'd say, um, but, but they're being, I think, fairly, um, I, I think they're coming at it with a, a good conscience, conscientious effort to engage the community.
Okay. And then, um, then Rob, are we actually giving up our water rights or are we just decommissioning, um, mechanical out there in the Choro Basin?
Currently, we are decommissioning, um, equipment out there. We actually do not have a right to the water out there. Um, we are under permit to convert that to a right, but it'll take several years of making, um, um, use of that water before it converts to a right. Um, the also thing with California, uh, water rights on these types of, um, streams or flowing underground streams, these aquifers is, um, we are an appropriative user. The agriculture is a riparian user and they have, um, the highest right. So we're on the lowest, um, um, for example, if there were a drought situation, um, Morro Bay's water would be reduced before the riparian user's water, um, if these basins were ever adjudicated.
Okay.
Um, on the nitrate question, um, found the tables that show that, um, uh, it's almost a, in geological terms, a immediate response. So it's, the graphs show starting injection in, um, somewhere between 23 and 24, and then the nitrate concentration drops by 2025.
Okay. That's fairly quick.
That's in a, um, report that's on the city's work, the night 2019 update, and it's shown in, uh, figure nine.
Okay. Then, uh, do we have any other discussion or questions from the commission? Okay. I think we're, I don't see any. Uh, I cannot see Jesse and I cannot see, uh, Susan, so, um, speak up if you have anything else you'd like to add. All right. Then do we have a, can I have a motion?
Yeah. Macrame, move that we recommend to city council, uh, that they allocate 50 water equivalency units for residential development and 65 for commercial development for a total of 115 WEUs for fiscal year 2020 slash 21.
Okay. Do I have a, do I have a second? Okay. Then, uh, we have a motion in a second. Um, do we have any discussion or would, um, Rob or Damaris, would you like to, would you like to add anything to this? Okay. Uh, seen none, then, um, can we call the, call the question?
Sure. Um, Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Grapia?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Brown? I see him. He's muted.
We record hand gestures?
We bored and we fell asleep.
Yeah, I'm not, uh, all right. I guess we'll have to move on. Maybe he's having technical difficulties. Uh, Chairperson Lauer?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Motion passes four zero. Um, Jesse unable to vote.
All right. Well, thank you very much, guys, for the, for the report and the, the good work on keeping us watered.
Yeah.
So, um, moving on, we have unfinished business, uh, I have an MD unfinished business and we have none. Uh, so do we have any finding commissioner, uh, comments or announcements?
I have a couple of things, Jerry. Um, one, it looks like the vacation rental ordinance is going to come back to, uh, the vacation rental ordinance committee next week to review. So that's kind of exciting. That's finally, uh, been vetted through the legal process. And, um, so I imagine a few weeks or a month or so after that, Scott can tell us, it'll come before us. Um, the other comment I had, and I don't know whether it's something that could be an agenda item or a clarification item, but I was thinking a lot about the housing development project, um, and the community concerns about that and, and some of that having to do with the concentration of projects in that area. Um, and I think it's an important project, the, the low income housing. I think if we had stopped it because of the potential for traffic and interference with a project that hasn't, that's been approved, but has not at all come to fruition, which is the Sonic Burger project. Um, so I, I guess my concern is, is how long a project can sit in the pipeline with a relatively unresponsive, um, applicant, um, that could potentially stop other good projects that are more shovel ready and what we can do about that. Because if Sonic Burger were up and running at the time when we were looking at this housing development, it probably would have had a very different traffic study and, um, you know, we, we would have looked at, at the pedestrian traffic from the kids more closely, I think. So I don't, I don't, I don't know if that makes any sense, whether that's something to consider again as an agenda item or, um, just a discussion item down the road. But it seems to happen because things take so much time that we might approve something two or three, four years ago. I don't know when Sonic Burger came before you, but it's not happening. And I'm glad it didn't stop the housing project, but I'm almost wondering if the housing project should now stop the Sonic Burger project. So throw that out there as a, a comment, I guess.
Okay. Scott, do you want to comment?
I, I would don't betray too far into the subject because it's not agendized. Um, I would say that, you know, the affordable housing project, um, you know, the traffic study that was done for it was a cumulative traffic study taken into account the hotel, Sonic and other projects that are, you know, that, that have taken place or were recently constructed, um, in the area. So it, it does take a look at cumulative view, um, and not unlike the hotel project. Um, you know, you're looking at, uh, the impacts, the proportionate share that of traffic that it lends during peak hours, meaning morning and, and evening, um, to the intersections to, uh, identify what it would pay into intersection improvements. Um, so they're fair share, in other words. Um, so there's a, there's a cost associated with those and those projects were all conditioned to do that, as was Sonic. Um, so they are paying into the, the system, you know, the, the system has gotten to where it is to this point based on existing development patterns in the city and not proposed. Um, and again, they're conditioned to buy into the system. Um, so I don't know where you go beyond that other than having a discussion far be, much beyond what I just said, probably requires us to agendize this item, um, for, you know, future discussion. Um, you know, as, as far as, you know, the project not moving forward, the Sonic side of things, they do have, they, they've gotten a couple of, uh, time extensions, um, which they're entitled to, and they're still operating underneath those. And I think, you know, have, you know, there's six months on the last one that they received, um, to make a decision about whether they're going to submit, you know, revise, their revised building plan, because where it's, it's, they, it's, it's in building. Um, our, our comments are out to them and they need to respond and they have not done that in almost a year, I think. So maybe over a year.
Okay. Do we have any other, um, comments from commission? Okay. I, I just have one. I just, I've noticed that they're starting the roundabout up on, uh, Highway 46 and Vineyard Drive, um, up in, uh, west side of Templeton. And, um, I'm wondering where we are in the queue for, uh, 41 and Main Street. It seems like we have a lot more, it would be more critical to get that done than to get, for Caltrans to do the, the work up on 46. So Scott, do you have any?
I don't really have much of an update for that. I, you know, my last recollection was that we had like 30% design plans for it, um, you know, residing at Caltrans. And then, um, we had to come up with another funding source, um, you know, to bridge the gap because there's some funding through Slocog that's, that's, that's held in place for us right now. We need to come up with some matching funds. Obviously, with the impacts to, you know, from COVID-19 and the financial situation for the city, we don't have any money. Um, so that money, those funding sources will have to come from other places. Um, and I don't know how available those are going to be going into the future, uh, because of the amount of money that's expended both federally, um, and statewide to support efforts related to COVID and the response to that. Um, so, uh, I am, I'm not super optimistic that in the near term, we're going to have any funds coming forward. They're going to, they're going to fill the gap between, you know, the Slocog fund, funding that's been identified through Slocog, excuse me, and then, um, the additional need, uh, to get to that seven and a, sevenish, seven and a half million dollar cost for the roundabout.
Well, would this, would that project be considered shovel ready?
It, it's, and we've been working with them for several years. Um, right now, that's where we're at, is trying to look for funding opportunities to, to, to sort of, you know, make the project whole. And they've gone through a planning phase to put plans together for it. I think it was like, last time I checked in and I, and again, it's been a while, it was at 30%, I believe 30% design phase. I don't know if it's proceeded past that, um, uh, or not at this point. It's not a conversation I've had recently with, um, uh, with public works, um, to see if anything's changed on that. So I'd have to, I'd have to ask them and report back, uh, you know, what the overall status is from the design side of that.
And then, uh, speaking about Caltrans, we also had a project, a beautification project for the chain link fence on North Main. Um, has there been any movement on that or would that be, would that fit into a, um, an infrastructure project?
We had a project over there, you said?
Yeah. Several years back, they came forward with some, some, uh, general design, um, guidelines that they, that they did a presentation at the, uh, planning commission. And, um, then it never went anywhere from there. So, you know, they, they were talking about changing the chain link fence and then doing some, um, some different signage. And we gave them, we gave them the input that we wanted more, uh, natural materials rather than, uh, you know, the green metal signs and, and stuff like that. And, uh, that kind of, they were going to do, um, an iron rail fence, uh, to replace the chain link fence. It was, this was after they did the, the beautification down in Santa Barbara.
Oh, okay.
And so I was, I was wondering if that, that has ever surfaced because that's still an eyesore.
It is, and, um, I'm not aware of the, of the project or, you know, what happened with that. I can certainly do a little, uh, research and, you know, report back to the commission after you do that for the next meeting.
Okay.
I'll do the same, same thing on the status of the roundabout for you.
Okay. Great. That would just be interesting to keep at the top of mind if nothing else.
Sure.
Um, then, uh, do you have any comments, Scott?
Uh, yeah. Um, Commissioner Stewart's comments related to the vacation rental ordinance, um, been sitting with the city attorney's office for a little while now. They've largely been putting together, taking the input and putting it into a usable form, uh, to present back to the vacation rental committee. We were, we are, I think, looking at potentially having it come forward, um, at your second meeting in July. Um, obviously I have it tentatively scheduled for that. Um, we'll see if we get that or not. Um, and then, uh, here's your last warning, uh, the housing element's coming to you at our next meeting. So if you haven't started looking at it, uh, you should start looking at it now. Um, uh, we're bringing it forward. We've gotten some comments from it, uh, the chamber, uh, they're going to the affairs committee, I think, put together some, uh, response, about a 10-page letter, pretty comprehensive look with some, uh, interesting ideas in it. So, um, we'll be putting that in the staff report for you Tuesday. You can take a look at that. Um, we're internally, we just received it, so, um, I haven't had a lot of time to chew on it, but, um, we, uh, will be looking at that internally and I'll meet with the consultant to kind of, you know, look at some of the things that are in there. Some of the recommendations we're doing and others, um, probably aren't really feasible. Um, but, um, definitely looking at some of the recommendations they made, you know, they have Stephen Peck over there, who's a long time planner, and, um, you have Jack Echols, who's, um, the Housing Trust Fund Board, um, for many years. And so, um, so looking at some of those things, um, you know, to take that input. So, but it's coming, so.
Okay. Anything else from the commission? Okay. Seeing none, uh, we'll adjourn to the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting on July 7th, uh, 2020, uh, at 6:00 PM with this, uh, via teleconference and we'll see how it works then. Okay, guys?
Thank you, everybody.
Bye-bye.